We are honored to have the opportunity to recognize Jimmy and Doug Maxwell for their dedication and generous contributions made through their business and volunteerism show by helping our community. Maxwell's Big Star has been a landmark in our community over fifty years. It was founded by our brothers, James Malcolm and Yvette Maxwell in March nineteen sixty. The grocery store itself has a tremendous economic impact on our city and has provided much more to all than just being our local grocer. Through the kindness and generosity of the Maxwell family, they have helped sponsor many local events, either monetary or donating food and drinks. Also, over the years, they have offered after-school and weekend jobs for many of our youth. These jobs have helped our students attain work ethic and as they prepare for life's journey. Doug and Jimmy grew up working in the store, then fulfilled their father's shoes. They have been devoted and compassionate business owners and our community has been touched and blessed by such a caring and empathetic family. In closing, we want to sincerely express our appreciation and say thank you for all you've done for us and our town and wish you both the best absolute, uh, wish you both the absolute best in your retirement. Sincerely, Julian A. McTizik, Mayor of the City of Oliver and the entire City of Oliver Council. Thank you guys so, so much.
We appreciate it.
We have these little tokens there. If y'all want to open this up.
Yes, sir, y'all can open it.
And if y'all have any words, that's all I would like to say.
I would like to say that we appreciate the honor, y'all. I'm not much of a man of words, but anyway, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Let's see what you got there.
Let's follow them extra hours out working.
Get that noise right there. It's a nice cereal bowl right there. Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Again, thank you guys so much.
We appreciate it. Thank you all.
All right, yes, sir.
Just one other announcement I just learned about a few moments ago. One of our new council members has a birthday today and we would like us to pause and wish Ms. Carol Spinks a very happy birthday.
Twenty-five today, right? Happy birthday. Thought Paige maybe gonna sing if he brought her up. All right, um, do you guys have this letter here on your desk in front of you? What this is, and we, I always brought this, we have to pass this tonight, so that's why it's not on the agenda. You can add mine there if you don't have one. Oh, okay. Uh, what this is, basically, every, the state has started a new law where we have to get in writing from the, all our local, well, the banks, excuse me, the banks that we're using, their interest rates on their accounts, on the checking accounts, the savings accounts, as well as the money marketing accounts. Uh, we don't, I'm not asking that we move any of our money, ask us to leave it where it is and just keep, you know, what we have, but we have to have this, they have to provide this to us as a new law that has passed and we have to, uh, we have to pass this. So if you have any questions, Mr. Marone is aware of the, uh, new TCA code that's established to put all this in place, but you can see here, the banks we use are CBNS, Simmons, Centennial, and the Bank of Hardeman County. Yes, we just have to have these, if you, did you have some else you wanted to send?
Yes, we do have to have a vote on that tonight, that y'all can leave the money like it is or unless you want to.
All right, yeah.
But we highly recommend it stays where it is, that really good interest rates from all the banks and we already set up, we've got checks, we've got all the things that are direct deposit there, a lot of our grant money, they're into certain accounts, so just they are really good, we do recommend, well, Lisa and I recommend that we leave them as they are.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. If you would call the roll, Ms. Clerk. And you can use your clicker when you say it.
Mr. Dowden?
You get me?
Oh, you both said.
Ah, you got it, okay.
Mr. Joy. Mr. Law. Mr. Ray. Mr. Spinks. Mr. Walker.
All right, motion, motion carried. Mickey may take us a little longer to get this system in what I thought. I'm happy it ain't but three letters on there. Two. All right, this, uh, concludes my report. Next, we have Standing Committee reports on the electric report. Ball of Energy Authority is reporting the board picked up, approved a bid for a pickup truck from Lonnie Cobb Ford of Henderson. The board approved long-term contract with TVA, will save BEA approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Board approved the recommendation to pass entire savings to customers. Target date is for October, meet already and subject to TVA approval. Um, I just want to commend BEA, uh, Mr. Law and the whole board there, Mr. Kirk, Mr. Fortune, they have, um, got a better rate, a cheaper rate from TVA and they have chose to pass that rate, uh, that cheaper rate on to the, the savings on to the customer. So you will be seeing a saving, like I said, in October if that's approved, uh, well, actually it's been, I talked to Mr. Kirk and it has been approved by TVA. So just want to commend BEA on that. Uh, next, Utilities, Mr. Cliff Henson.
Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, uh, Baller Utility Board met last Wednesday on September the fourth in a regular session. Uh, the items we discussed, the first one, the board approved to sign another five-year contract with Tennessee Gas Pipeline, and this is for our storage and transportation costs. Uh, this was no changes from our previous contracts, so it'll be, remain the same for the next five years. Uh, the utility department, uh, has completed many of the new gas mains that we've been installing this, this, uh, summer. We've got several more to get hooked up and tied in, but after this is all said and done, our project should gather us about another two hundred and fifty customers. So that's gonna be a real plus addition for our utility department since we lost Middleton a few years ago. And, uh, the last thing here is the gas prices remain low at sixty-five cents per hundred cubic feet. That concludes my report.
Next, we have Fire Chief Lynn Price.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. My report, uh, prior call, had a total of twenty-five calls. We had sixteen in the city, four in the county. We had, uh, training hours, two hundred and fifteen training hours, smoke alarm installed with eighty-one, pre-planned inspection twenty-three. Uh, did, oh, you get these files in your report? Okay. Uh, Wednesday, we are having a memorial service out here for nine eleven, out here at the fire station. Uh, we also gonna be doing breakfast at Joe's, so we definitely invite all you guys if you can make it, we appreciate you coming out. And also want, uh, Commissioner McKinney, I know AC thanked you last time, last month, I also want to say thank you for coming out, helping out with our school supplies. Thank you. This is my report.
Thank you, Chief. Also, the, in October, the Fire Emergency Services Festival is in there, you got that one as well. I think we have a meeting before then. All right, next, Chief Jones.
Good evening. We had a total of eight hundred and thirty-five calls of service, a hundred and eighty-four citations, we had twenty-two accidents, three of them were injuries, nineteen were property damage only, forty-four arrests, thirty-eight adults, six juveniles. Special events, we did a safety campaign, we did back-to-school giveaway, we did five DUI saturations, and we did one child safety seat checkpoint, and we also had ninety-six hours of training. Thank you.
Thanks, Cesar.
Uh, one other thing, we will start this week, our Citizens Academy, we've had fourteen people total signed up and it'll go till, like, October the twenty-second. So if you have time, it's one night a week, y'all can come out and just visit the people, but we had fourteen people sign up and it starts tomorrow, I think.
Tomorrow, yeah, it's six, I think. Five-thirty, is that gonna be in here over?
We're gonna be in here tomorrow. Then we'll change, but we've already booked the rooms for.
Okay, so five-thirty here tomorrow? Yes, sir.
Just a quick question, Chief, with the, with the new Tennessee law related to cellphone use in cars, is that something you all are having to enforce now as well?
Yes, we've already started enforcing. The only thing about it, on your third or more offense, it has to go through General Sessions Court. Where we were writing tickets for it in school zones, now it has to go to General Sessions Court, it can no longer go through city, but we have started enforcing it.
All right, thank you, Chief. Next, Parks and Rec, Mr. Curtis Staff. As he's coming too, I want to commend, uh, Chief Jones, his barbecue team, Mr. Fletcher and Captain Fletcher, I don't know who else helped him, but they barbecued for, uh, First Lady Lee, I guess two or three weeks ago, she was there, they barbecued for the seniors, and Governor Lee's wife was up and they all talked about how well the barbecue was. So, good job.
Mayor and Council, on August twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, the old Bogdok Building was torn down and hauled off. We appreciate Casey Swift and the County Highway Department for their assistance with this project. Uh, the Kaboon Park Playground is scheduled to begin on September twenty-fourth, it'll probably take a couple of days to do that, weather permitting. Uh, Mayor, we're gonna have a little, what, ceremony on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, if you don't touch on that?
Just the ceremony for, if you guys can remember, we, I guess we announced this at our town hall meeting about the Kaboon Park grant that we received and we're, uh, building over on Water Street. We're in the final stages of that and we're gonna have a little ceremony and ribbon cutting the twenty-fifth of that Wednesday at five o'clock, I'm sorry, five-thirty. At five-thirty, uh, so love for you guys to come out. We, this has been a goal of, I know Curtis made, it's been his long-term goals for a while, to have a recreational place on, uh, in the East End, and so we finally with the team, help, teamwork with, uh, Ball Housing Authority, Mr. Mike Miller and City working together on that, so I think that's gonna be a, a good place, park. Five-thirty.
Five-thirty.
I think Cliff is gonna do some hot dogs and chips and stuff, and there's gonna be some small things to do together as a community of hauling some wood, well, then, what do they call, it's wood chips, but what manufacturer?
Engineered wood chips.
Engineered wood chips. Whatever, just stuff to put on the ground. Yeah, uh, so that encourages everybody to come out, five-thirty to that Water Street. Thank you, Mr. Staff. Next, House Streets and Sanitation, Mr. Eddie Vander. We've been getting a lot of work out of Eddie here lately, yeah?
Good afternoon. Playing at Tiger Falls and crosswalk on Tiger Alley, which was renamed over on Duck Road, put Tiger Alley signs up over there. And we installed a new cupboard and a new residence on Young Road. Sanitation, we had eighty-seven tons of residential garbage and three hundred and fourteen tons of commercial garbage. We're supposed to be opening bids for dumpsters tonight.
All right. This, uh, this, we, I know since I've been on the council, I guess, last four years, six years, it's always been one bid for dumpsters, uh, waste equipment, they're hit. Make this so hard to find. All right, uh, twelve dumpsters at seven hundred and ninety dollars apiece comes to a total of nine thousand four hundred and eighty dollars, and that's for the eight cubic yard, uh, ten gauge dumpsters. Ten gauge walls, twelve gauge doors, I guess that's what. Um, and what's the budget amount for that?
Twelve thousand.
All right, so that is below the, below the, uh, budget. It's a total of nine thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. You wanted twelve right there?
Uh, we've got twelve thousand dollar budget for it, so a lot by where we put it.
Okay, so we can get a couple more of it. Is, any questions on this bid?
Last year's bid was nine hundred and forty-five dollars what we gave for.
So they didn't come down a whole lot. Is everybody okay for Eddie to order, any questions first tonight?
Should we go lay in?
That's what I was trying to ask, yeah, to get up to twelve thousand. Yes, sir, Mr. Walker.
No, I'm just gonna ask the same question.
That's what I would like, but it's just, that's for y'all to make it come.
We approved the bid, the line was transferred, spin the budget, I mean, all this.
All right, I have a motion and a second, let's be fifteen, motion and a second, uh, would you call the roll, Ms. Clerk?
Mr. Dowden?
All right.
Mr. Joy? Mr. Law? Mr. Spinks? Mr. Ray? Mr. Spinks? Uh, Mr. Walker? Mr. Law? All right.
Did you get us out there?
Motion care.
What I didn't give was, uh, John.
Well, I hit it.
You hit the green or the yes?
Yes, that means you, everybody said yes, so we'll deal with that later. That motion care.
Appreciate it.
I didn't get it. There you go, sir. All right, uh, planning, Councilman Golden.
Baller Planning Committee met Monday, August nineteenth, approved a subdivision plot including recertification letter for the sub tank in, uh, Peggy Stanley Estate located on Urban Grove Boundary off Highway sixty-four. We talked about some other stuff, but that's, uh, the most right there, for subdivision, we're gonna hold up on it a little while. That concludes my report on Planning Committee.
I don't know, thank you, Mr. Golden. Ms. Baker, I don't think it's able to make it tonight, uh, you guys have, should have a library report. Next, Ms. Peggy, senior citizen.
Mayor of Council, uh, everything went routine this month, the, in the month of August, we did have a trip to Goodwill, North Jackson and went out to eat, and then, uh, had a regular attendance for the luncheon with Governor Lee's wife.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Peggy, and I'll tell, just, can get, commend you on the, the meal, putting together all that, it was sort of last minute, and you guys did a good job with that, everybody was very proud of that. Next, Historic Zoning Commission, Ms. Suzanne Ray.
Historic Zoning, Historic Zoning Commission met August the eighth, and, uh, we reviewed an update, uh, given on the progress of the Hardeman County Courthouse Phase Two Restoration. A summary was provided on the interior renovation of the Hatchet Fish Camp, and an update was given on the future parking that will accommodate the Louise Theater and other businesses along Main Street that'll be right across the street. And that concludes my report.
Next, Zoning and Compliance, Mr. Watkins.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You should have a copy of my report. Uh, building consultations, nine building permits written, five building inspections, fifteen plumbing inspections, ten mechanical inspections, eight courtesy notices issued, forty, and just give you a brief update, 'cause we're not having a, um, slum hearing tonight, but, uh, here's some cleanup going up, going on over on Maple Street, looking better, and, uh, also, Mr. Farr called me that did not show up at the last meeting and he's trying to get somebody here to get his cleaned up, 'cause he wants to keep everything. So, he's invested quite a bit of money and it looks good inside, but gotta get it going outside, so he's working on that.
I have one more question, like the house on Margin Street down there we talked about, uh, Mike Miller, the housing store, they would like to get that property, if they could buy it from the county or whoever they willing to pay for it, tear it down, clean it up and want to put another house back there. And it's, it's, it's slum too, and it belonged to us, you know, so we got to see if we can...
Does it belong to us?
Was the county, I think they consider state part of the county owns it, uh, man, County Mayor had talked about getting that and tearing it down, but if they was interested in doing it, I guess we could talk to Martin.
I'm pretty certain it can be bought for the tax dollars.
All right, yeah, that's what, that's what Mayor saying he had no use for, they just didn't pay the, I don't know why they paid the city taxes, but not the county taxes and it reverted back.
Well, the housing store that was interested in, they were at least doing something, you know, with it, 'cause it looked, it looked bad.
Oh, it looks terrible.
Well, I'll talk, I'll talk to Mike about it and see what his.
Okay.
Or there was no DEFCO meeting this month, so I'll send you a message of the meeting dates for next month. Uh, Mr. Ken Griggs of Main Street.
Good evening, everyone. Baller Main Street is off to a strong start, everyone. Um, we have, I want to first say that we have a strong group of dedicated people that are really working hard, and we have some really exciting events, we're really doing well on major things downtown in Baller, we would love to have more support at some of these events. Um, our fiscal year officially began on July first, and, uh, from that point, we have developed two events that have had a lot of success. Baller After Work at the Bisc, at the Biscuit Tree has such a strong start in the beginning that we have made this a weekly event, and, um, we will continue to do this as a weekly event for now, and when other restaurants, uh, come downtown, we plan to make this a rotating event and give those other venues opportunity to participate in the economic success that the Biscuit Tree is having right now. Baller Main Street Vice President, Ms. Suzanne Ray, uh, introduced me, uh, to Ms., what's her name, um, here she go, Ms. Duana Cranford over at Baller Central High School. Now, I spoke to two of her senior classes, and I asked those senior classes what would they like to see in their district, and the students unanimously agreed that there should be more safe spaces for them to gather, especially after high school sporting events. From this meeting, we developed another concept that we're calling the post gang, the Tiger Post Gang at Common Ground. Now, this is an alternative to the children that do not want to participate, I guess, in the fifth quarter at First Baptist, they're just kind of hanging out in the downtown area. So we want to give them another safe space for them to congregate and kind of give them a, a watchful eye of some adults, and it seem to be working pretty well so far. Um, oh, also, uh, ten percent of all of the monies, the net profits that's been generated at Common Ground is being donated back to Baller Central High School, so that's a great thing. Um, and finally, for this report, we have settled on a date for Stacks on the Square. Uh, for those of y'all who've seen that before, on October the twenty-second of two thousand sixteen, myself and the, uh, Chamber of Commerce brought the Stacking Music Academy back. So we've settled it for October the nineteenth, hopefully that's the date. We've submitted that particular date for them, and if, uh, they're available, you'll see stacks back, uh, that's being presented by Main Street. And that concludes my report for tonight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rick. Moving on to old business, bid on purchasing new truck and cans. Ma'am, uh, yeah, no DEFCO report, no meeting this month, uh, so I have the scheduled date for the, I have the schedule for the DEFCO meeting, uh, next week, uh, whenever they schedule. A bid on purchasing new trucks and cans for the sanitation department, uh, Mr. Jamie McCoy from River City Hydraulics Incorporated will come on down. Uh, as he's coming down, uh, it was brought to our attention that we could purchase this truck off of state contract like we've been doing with, uh, Cliff and, um, the utility department opposed to the bid, the, the way this contract is set up, they guarantee the lowest price. Uh, we are part of that, uh, so, say the Source Wheel, am I saying? Source Wheel, that's what I'm trying to, we are part of that, so he's the vendor for that company, and they're here to, uh, present their cans and trucks, and I'll just, I'll turn it over to you guys and let y'all go for them here.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, I brought with me Bob Durden, he's with Cascade Engineering, he represents the carts that we want to propose for you. Uh, he brought one for you to look at, and I prepared a packet here, if, uh, can you pass those up?
I can bring your cart down, y'all want to touch it, or we can push it back a little bit. Yeah, you can bring it, bring it down a little bit. No, I'm, I'm sorry.
You ready? Yes, sir, we, we got it situated now.
All right. Okay, so, well, after, as you notice in your packet, I brought, uh, a purchase agreement for the truck, which is on the right-hand side, the carts, which is on the left-hand side, and this is through the Source Wheel contract, and we'll start with the carts, 'cause that's gonna be the easiest. Uh, carts gonna cost a hundred and sixteen thousand, a hundred and six dollars, and that's for twenty-one hundred carts supplied to the city. Now, that price includes our team coming in, bringing the carts in, unloading, ma, assembling, and distributing out to each household. As they distribute out to each household, they'll be recording the serial number, which is on the front of the cart here, to that address. When we're completed distributing the carts, they'll give you a CD or a thumb drive, and it should give you every address that a cart with the serial number was, was dropped off at. Uh, these carts are made by Cascade, Mr. Bob Durden here represents Cascade, we are a vendor for Cascade, he works for the factory, so I asked him to come. If you had any questions about the cart, it's ninety-six gallons. We would not, oh, and behind that, you'll notice a picture of that truck that says Caribou there. As we talked in our preliminary meeting, we'll have door hangers for you to start off your new project with, so this will be the front of the door hanger, this will be the back of the door hanger. Or you can stuff the water, uh, bills, stuff it in a water envelope, but it'll show the resident their collection day, what they can, what they can't put in the cart, where to put it out, when to put it out, and all that. So that's for the carts. Any questions on the carts? Let's move on to the trucks. Bob, how long did it take to get your cart?
Uh, that's what I was trying to ask, you said the carts is gonna take a little longer to get, right?
Yeah, we're seven, eight week delivery right now. I saw an update when I was sitting in the parking lot, I said five, but I'm not gonna comment on that until I talk to somebody else, so seven, eight's what we're putting out, so.
Okay, okay.
If you got any questions about how we record it, I'll briefly go into that. This is, this serial number's just a date, this was made in, uh, in April of two thousand nineteen, obviously this year, so the next numbers are consecutive, are random. And this has RFID chip on the side, and a tag, they're gonna hit it out, so you won't be able to get them out. I can take it out if you want to look at. Our crews will have an electronic scanner hooked to a cellphone, so what we'll need from y'all is, is a database of all of your street addresses. We'll clean it up, put it in our scanner, and the crews will scan the RFID chip and that records this into the database. We'll give you that database back at the end of the project, like Jamie said.
So, Bob, what other, what other uses can they use RFID chip for?
Well, you know, you, you can use, RFID chips can be read by certain types of scanners. Um, it depends on, a lot of times people bill by, but y'all flat rate bill, I'm sure, so you don't want to get into that, but at some point in time you can. But if somebody says that, that, after we drop the cart off, if, after we leave or even while we're here, somebody says, I didn't get a container, we'll be able to say, yes, we left one there and its serial number was this. When that serial number shows up at somebody else's house down the street, we can say, why did you, how did you get that, because it was left over here. Now, this is not a, an active RFID, this is passive, which means there's no signal coming out of here until you flash at it, and it flashes back the information. So it's not like a, a global positioning GPS tag, so, but you can tell where it was moved, where it came from and where it was moved to by just flashing the scanner.
One thing that I'll bring out, we, he came down, Mr. McCoy came down and met with myself and, uh, Mr. Vander, and he, we get, he'd get a lot of calls all the time, people saying, you didn't, you didn't pick up my trash, y'all went right by my house, and why they would pick up everybody on the street and not Ms. Jones, I don't know, but sometimes we get a call saying they didn't pick up the trash. This truck, as he talked more about that, he showed us how they had, it's a camera inside the truck that records three sixty around the truck, and we can pull up and look at the camera and watch if the truck picked up the trash, if the trash can wasn't there, if it wasn't out or wasn't where it's supposed to be in, or if we, if our driver did miss it, you know, we have all that stuff documented there, so that was one thing, I think Eddie was very, very pleased with, um, that he had documentation to go back and show what time it was there, when it was picked up, and, you know, where, what happened from there on, so that was one thing that was brought for. And then we also talked about having, um, other, if, let's say a resident decides that they want to purchase an additional can, we could go out and, and give them an additional can if we decided to, uh, do that. Every, and to update all the... We'll be able to say, yes, we left one there and its serial number was this. And that serial number shows up at somebody else's house down the street. We can say, why did you, how did you get that? Because it was left over here. Now, this is not a, an active RFID. This is passive, which means there's no signal coming out of here until you flash at it and it flashes back the information. So it's not like a, a global positioning GPS tag, so. But you can tell where it was moved, where it came from and where it was moved to by just flashing the scanner.
One thing that I'll bring out, we, he came down, Mr. McCoy came down and met with myself and uh, Mr. Vander. And he, we get, Eddie get a lot of calls all the time, people saying, you didn't, that, you didn't pick up my trash. Y'all went right by my house. And why they would pick up everybody on the street and not Ms. Jones? I don't know. But sometimes we get a call saying they didn't pick up the trash. This truck, as he talked more about that, he showed us how they had, it's a camera inside the truck that records three sixty around the truck. And we can pull up and look at the camera and watch if the truck picked up the trash, if the trash can wasn't there, if it wasn't out or wasn't where it's supposed to be in, or if we, if our driver did miss it, you know, we have all that stuff documented there. So that was one thing. I think Eddie was very, very pleased with um, that he had documentation to go back and show what time it was there, when it was picked up, and you know, where, what happened from there on. So that was one thing that was brought for. And then we also talked about having um, other, if, let's say a resident decides that they want to purchase an additional can, we could go out and, and give them an additional can if we decided to uh, do that. Every, and to update all the citizens that may be tuning in or just here tonight, what we're, our overall goal is, one, is get a cleaner city and more efficient uh, working operation at the street depart- uh, sanitation department, rather. And this was the first piece of that too. So we're not l- uh, laying off any employees, anything like this. We'll free up some guys that is going to be able to go and do other tasks in the sanitation department that will in turn help in the long run, get us a, give us a cleaner city. We, but we have budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand for the cans and uh, five hundred thousand, I'm sorry, uh, three hundred thousand for the uh, trucks. So to update you, if, just to let the citizens know where we are on this and just sort of update that. I'm sorry, I should probably have did that first, but um, you guys can go ahead. I just wanted to mention the camera part.
How much warranty you got on those?
Ten years.
How many?
It's ten-year material and workmanship.
Ten years.
Not unquestioned. It's just if somebody, you know, runs, runs over it or pushes it up against a post and breaks it, I can usually tell that. And I, I, I live outside of Memphis. I live in South Haven, Mississippi. So I do all the warranty for my territory. So, you know, it's, it's not unusual when Jamie sells a truck, a new automated truck will come in. Usually the first couple of weeks will have the drivers that aren't used to using it, break some wheels and, and just generally tear things up. I, I replace those free, you know, we, we do those on charge. But in two years, if you've got a, if you've got residents that are leaving the lid open and the grabber comes by to pick it up, he's going to break the lid because the grabber goes behind it. So that's why it's got embedded all over it, closed lid before dumping. And it's got arrows hits this side towards the street. If y'all can read all that. I'm going to leave this here to show, to show it to residents while pushing around.
Mr., but, I'm sorry, go ahead. I think Mr. Ken has a question.
I think he answered. He opened it up. I was, he had a problem opening something a while ago, so.
Oh, that was a bad chip on the truck.
You answered my question, so you done, you done good, done good.
And that, that was thing too. I know if y'all have problems with y'all trash, but it's my, I got some dogs in the community that love to knock over trash cans. I think that'll put a stop to some of that. Raccoons and everything.
And I'll mention this upfront, the one problem you may have here with a lot of trees, squirrels love to try to eat through here. So your, your ordinance should say that all, all garbage going in here should be inside a bag. If you throw raw garbage in here, squirrels and raccoons, you're going to attack this thing. And they love to eat this. They still can't get inside it.
That's just eat a rat.
They can eat this lid back into here and then they can fall in. So I've seen squirrels, worse than raccoons, eating it.
And that's, that is a, and as me and uh, Mr. Vander sat down and just overlooked overall on our sanitation department, we have a lot of ordinances in place now that, that's like that's, your trash is supposed to be in a bag, not supposed to be over fifty pounds. Um, and I'll, for men, Eddie and his bunch, those guys on that truck work hard. Um, they pick it up, whether it's in a bag or a can, they do all of it. And I mean, we, I just, just want to say thank you for them, but it, I'm like, I appreciate you guys for considering this. This was a little outdated.
This is rated at three hundred and thirty-six pounds, but I can't push you with three hundred and thirty-six pounds in it. It's really not a awful lot of weight. You know, so when somebody says, I've got five hundred pounds, people are pushing to the end of the driveway. They're going to be as, as big as the chief of police, senator fire director. Big dollar pushing. If you can't just push this thing.
A lot of garbage at three hundred and thirty pounds.
Yes, that's residential garbage, that's a lot of garbage. There's some, there's a lot of shit.
Can we have to vote on this separately?
Uh, yeah, I guess, yeah, I guess we'll take both of them separately. But I, I want to, let's, let's talk about the truck. Do anybody have any other questions on the cans part? Okay, uh, now we can move on to the truck. And this here, these guys are going to provide this material to us, but I also want us, as in the process of moving forward on this, take time to make sure we do advertising and spend some money advertising our, uh, advertising and letting our citizens know what's going on. And our overall goal, I, like I said, it's, for me, it's more than us just buying a truck. I'm hoping that we, this is just one tool to move forward and have a cleaner city, so.
Thank you. Uh, so if you look on the right, we've got the, the purchase agreement for the truck. We discussed, it's an automated truck. If you're not familiar with that, it's got an arm, one man operates the truck from inside the cab, doesn't have to get out. Uh, so then on the second page, if you decide to buy the truck outright, you pay two hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars, ninety-two cents. If you want to enter into a two-year buyback program with me, you still pay the same amount. But I'll guarantee a balloon at the end of the note of a hundred and seventy-one, and you just make monthly payments. It's covered under warranty from bumper to bumper.
And make sure I'm explaining how you explain it to me. If we decide, which I recommend us doing, doing that, uh, because we won't be in the situation we are now where we got a truck that's probably only worth scrap metal. Uh, but in, in the end of the two years, they buy the truck we got back, bring us a new one.
Yep. So I'll use Lexington, Tennessee. And I called Robbie McCready before I come in and ask if I could uh, use him as an example. So if we did the same thing in Lexington, they bought, they bought the same truck. What they did, they did it on a two-year buyback program. So understand, when you buy the truck, you own the truck. It belongs to you. You insure it, you license it. We cover it from bumper to bumper with warranty for two years. So River City guarantees a balloon note at the bank for a hundred and seventy-one thousand and change at the end of two years. We pay that balloon note off and we bring you another truck. We guarantee you your payment won't go up over a hundred dollars a month on that second cycle. I know this is really confusing, but so, so let me explain. You own the truck. You're going to go to the bank and you're going to finance it for two years with a big balloon note. All you're going to do is make payments. I pay the balloon note off. I bring you another truck.
And what was that figure again?
So the sale price of the truck, so on the second page, there is two ninety-one, three seventy-two, ninety-two. The balloon note is on the Bancorp South Finance document, which is the third page, is a hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. Now, at the end of two years, if you decide, hey, this truck belongs to us, it's running good, let's just keep it. Well, you owe the bank a hundred and seventy-one thousand, refinance. Truck belongs to you. All I'm doing is guaranteeing the balloon note. But with that, you don't have to come up with any money upfront. If we do the guaranteed buyback, we deliver your truck and your first payment of fifty-seven, thirty-six, fifty-six is due thirty days after you get the truck.
Now, you said if we chose not to go Bancorp's.
You go with whoever you want.
If we just, because our plan, we have the money in our fund balance to buy it.
Right.
We could just buy it straight out and you still.
Absolutely. And I'll still give you a hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollar at the end of two years. If the terms and conditions are met, which is on the, in your packet as well. And they basically say that windshield can't be knocked out of it, and the fender's hanging off and on ten flat tires.
Yeah. Now, I, we, the, at our last meeting, we discussed, let's purchasing it from the sanitation fund balance, which is right under a million dollars. I think it's nine hundred some thousand dollars. Uh, I was, my opinion on it was just to purchase it and not pay interest on it, just purchase it out of our fund balance and do the buyback program. But that's a decision on you guys. And that will save us some on the, on the interest.
We could purchase it outright. You'll buy it back a hundred, after two years. A hundred and seventy-one thousand.
Yes, sir.
And it's guaranteed for the two years too, with the bumper to bumper warranty.
Bumper to bumper warranty, that's great. Yes, sir. Including towing.
And if you buy it back, we get the other truck, we got warranty on there too?
Yes, sir. What we do is we buy that truck, we'll, we'll get with you about four months. So at month twenty, we'll come and get with you and say, okay, are you okay to continue on the buyback program? You tell me yes at that time. We'll meet again, we'll supply you with another contract. We'll start the cycle over. And I guarantee the hundred, it won't go up over a hundred dollars a month. And then on the mature date of, on the twenty-fourth month, final day of the twenty-fourth month, we deliver the new truck, we pick up the old truck, you just keep making payments. You don't skip a payment, you don't add a payment, you just keep making payments.
How much, how much training do you have to do, or do the driver have to do to uh?
A lot.
That's what.
And that's what I'm responsible for. Yes, sir.
You doing the uh, helping us with the training, training the driver or?
I do the training with the driver. Uh, I work hand in hand with the mayor with my experience in other cities and other states on how they started their programs by running ads in the newspaper, door hangers, stuff in the water, uh, bill envelopes. And uh, but we spend a lot of time training the drivers. And then we'll train your people, uh, that, the support staff go out and take biodegradable paint. If you got a resident that's putting their cart in the wrong place every time, we'll take biodegradable paint out and go mark the spot where that can needs to be and then leave a door hanger on their door. After about three months, Bob, did you say three months?
Yeah, usually.
After about three months, those problems go away.
And I, uh, I called and checked on, uh, I didn't, hadn't had a stand to see yet, but he was highly recommended from training Lexington. Uh, they had problems with what he just talked about, just taking the time to get the word out. But he trained their guys, uh, Eddie had, I think, three, right Eddie? Or two or three that you don't. He's going to train three of them on, on how to, how to drive it. Uh, going to do a lot of, like I said, social media stuff, videos and they, you said two weeks of newspaper advertisement? Like, they do two weeks of newspaper advertisement on, on them, saying we would do some as well, uh, just to, just get the word up.
So you're saying that this, we'll prove this is probably take, what, the first of the year? Because you're talking about three or four months to train the driver?
No, uh-uh. He, the three or, three or four months was the time it would take the citizens to get, to get used to all of them.
I thought you were talking about the driver.
Oh, no, no, no.
I'm speaking of the driver. Now, I ain't talking about citizens. I'm talking about the driver. Is we'll take about six or seven or eight cans when we can find a vacant lot. And we'll put the driver in the truck. We'll line those cans up and he'll spend all day dumping cans. And when he gets really good at dumping those cans, we'll take a paint can, maybe stick a piece of PVC pipe in it, some sand will stand up. And we'll put that PVC pipe right here. We'll train him how to navigate inside of that without knocking that.
Mailbox.
Mailbox door, on that toiled Corolla. And uh, so yeah, we spend a lot of time with the driver. When we finish training your driver, he'll be very proficient with that.
Okay, I was speaking of the driver, not getting citizens.
Yeah, you see, three, okay.
That extra cost too?
Sure, no, sir. All that's included with, with inclusion on the truck here.
Something else I forgot to mention, uh, we talked about, in the event that something goes down and on that truck, they'll have another truck for us to use until hours get up. And I, I told him in the meeting, I don't believe him on this, but he says that they, this truck can pick up just as many, well, can pick up more cans than what our truck is doing now. I, I don't know how it's going to happen, but he said he, he guaranteed me he's going, they're going to be able to do that. Uh, our route now is two and a half days, three days. And he's saying that they can, they can cut that down, so. Now, I trust him, but every, so, uh, what'd he say, two? I think you cut half a day of it out, right? Yeah, cut.
One driver.
With one driver.
Yeah.
Experienced driver.
Well, there's, there's a lot of other, there's other things that goes with this truck in, in terms of the driver. You know, the driver gets in the truck, he doesn't have to get out at the landfill anymore. He doesn't have to walk in the garbage. When it's cold and wet, he don't have to be outside in the elements, releasing the tailgate, raising, dumping. He doesn't have to do all that. He's in the cab. So what, what you wind up having is you have your workers' comp risk reduces because you're not exposing that guy to those dangers anymore. Plus, your driver morale goes up because he can get in that truck when it's a hundred degrees outside and he's got sixty degrees blowing on him, or vice versa.
Right.
So, yeah. What you'll find is your, your driver will take, not that they're not doing it now, he'll take pride in his truck. Uh, and he'll keep it clean.
Yes, sir, Mr. Well.
I, I was in Memphis earlier this morning and I went, was in the neighborhood and watched this very operation work. And I was amazed by how efficient that I, they, the driver was being able to go and clamp those, dump them, and move along. It was.
Yep.
It was really, you know, eye-opening.
So Mayor touched on the camera system just a few minutes ago, so I want to spend just a minute on that. So uh, the truck, uh, the camera system we have on the truck, it's three hundred and sixty degrees, also one in the hopper. Uh, so uh, let's say that the driver's dumping and he dumps a can, he sees a tire. You know, tires aren't allowed in the landfill, so he can control that. But, but as well, uh, if a car runs a red light and hits him in the side, you've got it on video. All you got to do is go back and watch the video. At any time during the day, you can log on to your website that we create for you with your city logo. And you can look and see where that truck's been, how long it's been there, where it's at now, so forth. And I told the story, I won't name the county, but I was actually in this lady's office one day and she got a phone call and she said, your garbage truck ran over my dog and killed it. And it was a very expensive dog and I want you to pay for it. And uh, she said, ma'am, where do you live? Uh, the lady at the county typed the address in and she pulled up a fifteen-second video and it showed the dog dead when she pulled up. Many, many stories like that, accidents. You didn't pick up my garbage, you tore up my mailbox. Well, you got proof. You just pull up that fifteen-second video and you can tell. It also protects the driver.
Mr. Well.
I, I don't know if other people have questions, but I'm ready to make a motion on it. I'd like to move that we purchase the, the truck outright, you know, with the balance we have in our sanitation account and put it on that two-year program with the buyback for a hundred and seventy at the end of the two years. And I don't have to have a separate motion for the cans or not if we.
Let's do the truck once and then we'll come back to the.
I'll make a motion on the truck.
Okay, have a motion in there a second. Have a motion in a second to uh, call the roll, Ms. Clerk.
Mr. Dowdlin?
Aight.
Mr. Joy?
Aight.
Mr. Lyle?
Aight.
Mr. King?
Aight.
Ms. Ray, uh, Ms. Stank?
Aight.
Mr. Martin?
Aight.
That motion carries. And now we will defend, I will entertain a motion for the cans.
May I ask a question, please, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I know you said we're going to do advertising for the cans. Are we going to also let the resident know if they want to purchase that extra can, they have to let us know a certain amount of deadline?
Yeah, uh, well, what we'll do on that part of it, we'll have extra cans at the uh, down at the street department. So every resident will get one can. And any resident, we'll put it up in a part of the advertisement. Uh, only ones I'm thinking is probably going to want more cans is like some of the group homes uh, that have, I took a picture of one group home, they put out eight trash cans every week. Uh, so we'll probably cut out some of those, but that will be available to purch- purchase uh, or pay extra monthly through the uh, utility department and the building part. So that will be a part of the, putting the advertising out on it. Any other questions? Are there a motion on the cans? I have a motion to purchase the cans and that's a hundred and sixteen thousand, a hundred and six dollars uh, for twenty-one hundred cans. I have a motion in a second, if you would call the roll, Ms. Clerk.
Mr. Dowdlin?
Aight.
Mr. Joy?
Aight.
Mr. Lyle?
Aight.
Mr. King?
Aight.
Ms. Ray, uh, Ms. Stank, uh, Mr. Lyle?
Aight.
That motion carries. Thank you guys so much. And we'll be in touch, get started on our level. I'll sign that uh, here. Well, I said thank you to the uh, council. I'm excited about the moving forward on what I'm just saying. Will you get this to Ms. Sheila for, copy this?
Sure. Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
All right, uh, next on the agenda, have the appointment of the resident for the beer board. You know, we waited for a response and Ms. Ginger Tester has a, uh, agreed to serve as a resident member of the beer board. Uh, there'd be a motion to accept Ms. Ginger?
It's.
Ginger Tester.
Is they here?
Oh, no, I, I, and that's my fault. I didn't tell them from, I'm sorry.
So, so.
Okay, have, have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aight.
Any oppose? That motion carries. I'm, no, uh.
I suppose you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, anybody opposed, no. Resolution nineteen zero zero seven, resolution authorizing the city of Ball to participate in the driver safety mansion grant program. We just have to do this every year to get approval to apply the grant for the public, well, it used to be approval, now it's the public entity partners, uh. Any questions on this resolution? I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, um, we do have one on the community development, that I, right this one, okay. Um, uh, Mr. Ken Savage, Mr. David Pulse, you guys can come forward this time. If, council, if y'all will, we can, you can go back in our minutes, let me see here. It's the last page of our city council minutes. You have the policy that the gentleman before us is wanting to discuss. It's the policy for the Ball of Downtown Courthouse Square on Warren Street. And if you guys remember last, the last council meeting, we, um, passed this policy, that anybody using the square would have to have liability insurance, and present that to Mr. Jerry Watkins three days before the event, to put it on our calendar, to make sure everybody's in compliance and nobody's overscheduled. And then, uh, the second part here, and I think this is the issue that these guys want to discuss, was like, there should be no motorized or mobile vehicles inside the protected areas of Warren Street, thirty minutes prior, thirty minutes after the organized event. So, I'll, um, if everybody can see that, I'll just turn it over to Mr. Ken and Mr. Pulse from the, uh, music commission.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Metisik and Councilman. I'm Ken Savage, I host Music on the Square every week. Uh, I'm speaking on behalf of Music on the Square. We started Music on the Square twelve years ago, and going from May through October. Music on the Square could not function without the help of Devco, the City of Balliver, and the citizens of Hardeman County. Each week, we have anywhere from a hundred to a few hundred to, to even a thousand or more people in town for our show. On Facebook Live, we, we stream the show live on, on there, and we have upwards of three thousand people watching our show each week. We, we have put, uh, Balliver on the map, as far as, uh, as a place for families and musicians to, to play on weekends, to listen to music and play. We have started, when we started Music on the Square in two thousand and eight, at that time, the bands furnished their own sound equipment. Some bands, uh, had better equipment than others, so some weeks the sound was better than others. But we knew if we were gonna go forward with this, uh, a, a bit, with Music on the Square, we needed to have a dedicated professional, uh, type sound crew. Devco searched and came up with, finally with, uh, Showtime Light and Sound, uh, after no one else would, would, uh, wanted to commit to six months of Friday nights, every Friday night, and at the price that we could afford to pay. We got a bargain, as our current sound crew had, has never missed, not even one event, in over the three hundred plus shows we have done. And we've have, uh, and they have performed this without a raise in, in the eleven years they've been doing this. Our sound crew have done shows for numerous national recording artists, and even for music events at Nissan Football Stadium in, in Nashville. I know, I feel, we, we feel our sound, that, I now feel that, that our sound crew and the future of Music on the Square is in a dispute with the county, city, and maybe even me. And personally, I don't want a dispute with anyone on how to run Music on the Square. I have done it without pay for the last twelve years, and after our sound crew lost equipment last year, not only the first time, but a couple occasions, uh, due to the weather, I agreed to let the sound crew park at the end, north end of Warren Street. It was regardless of how the weather looks at four o'clock, when they arrived to set up, sound up, that can change by ten PM, when the show is over. The water and electrical equipment do not mix. I'm just asking for their convenience, since our stage has no covering and the equipment is exposed to the weather, that our sound crews be allowed to continue to park at the far end of Warren Street. In the, in the case of weather, or even a rare equipment failure during shows, it would be best to have access to their truck and trailer and equipments, rather than have them parked some distance away. It would be safer for everyone attending to have their truck and sound equipment close by, rather than trying to drive through a crowded street with our fans that are trying to leave during a rainstorm. What you can see on stage is, is each week for sound equipment being used is only part of what they bring with them. They have to bring extra equipment. We are, they are prepared for whatever is needed, because the show must go on. They also have to repack the whole truck, just to secure everything left in the truck, just to move it around the block. The new owner of the office building, Denton Law Office, has given his permission to park there doing shows. As far as the safety record goes, one of our sound men is a professional truck driver with a spotless record, and the other is Parsons Tennessee Chief of Police. Both have respect for safety and of others. We have had ambulances come down on the square this past year, and without problem getting in or out, because of them being parked where they were. If our sound crew quits, the future of Music on the Square is in trouble too. We would never find another crew like we have now. I need a letter from the mayor and the, our city council, giving permission to host each, for the, for the host of each event, to have control over who can park on Warren Street. An order from someone else who is not even there, it's just not right, you know? I think the people should be in charge that are there. We do not allow any vendors to cook on the street, nor do we, or, or anything else I feel that is not in keeping with the event. We just ask for your blessing to have our guys park where they can get to their equipment when they need to. David?
I don't have a lot to add to that, I think you about covered everything. So, what I would like to, just to maybe refresh your memory about is, we've been doing this for twelve years without incident. We have not had any problems as far as our sound equipment being parked on the street. Sometimes I found it's better to choose your battles, so I don't think this is a battle that we need to address very much, because it's, we've got a good record. We just asked for some room to put our sound people there. We leave enough room there for the ambulances if we got any problems, and I think you'll find out, it's a good group of people. They do a good job, they're very safe, and we would ask that you would give us a letter to, uh, let us continue to park out on that street.
Do they park against the curb?
Yes.
And then you carry the office?
Yes ma'am.
So they can, they just pull up and then they can just back, ride back?
Yes ma'am. But, uh, twelve years is a pretty good record, and so, we just asked for y'all to give us something, say we parked there.
Mr. Wallace, you have, you have a question?
Just, just listening, it, it sounds like, you know, with our, our intentions obviously are, are noble to protect the citizens of Baller, but at the same time, we don't, uh, you know, we don't need to find a solution where there's no problem, and so, if we need to make some adjustment, I'd feel comfortable in making whatever motion needs to be made to make the adjustment to accommodate the request.
I would like to add one thing, is if we're moving trailers in and out of the square when we've got a lot of people there. People, if they're parked out on the street, they've got a lookout. I think we're a lot less trouble, as far as accident wise, is having them inside, as we do outside, to make sure we don't have any accidents out on the street.
I think, rather than make a change in our policy, I think we just make an exception for Music on the Square. Um, you know, I think our point was that we didn't want a lot of traffic in and out of that area, and I get that you guys have pretty well mastered that concept, so.
We only have women.
Yeah, so, I don't have a problem with, you know, giving them permission, but I, I think our policy needs to stay intact, so that everybody's not driving vehicles up in there. Um, so I'd like to see it regarded as an exception, rather than a change in the policy.
So we're saying just the sound crew be able to park in there, is that what we're saying?
I would say sound crew is all we need there. Occasionally, we have, which is, we've had one time that we asked for a car to park inside, cause we couldn't see, it was, uh, one of the entertainers came down, and, but outside that, we have never had anybody in there, other than our sound crew, and anybody other than that, we'll make arrangements in the future, that they not come in there at all.
Uh, Mr. Griggs is here, he also does the events on the square. Do, do you have, uh, do you have problems with vehicles not being in the area?
I, I typically park outside, that because we're supposed to lodge or after, it just kinda increases for us.
Do I have them inside, okay.
Yeah, I, I do, but what we try to do, we try to have them park right beside the office, uh, so that they can actually make a turn backwards and go right in the area, and we try to manage the crowd that are sitting in the area, so we make them aware that in case of rain, in case of emergency, this is the first move we have to move, so you gotta move to the sidewalk, and that way we can come back. I definitely understand what he means, because we recently dealt with a situation where it rained, and we had to move over to, uh, fire market, and one of the things we were worried about is, uh, the rain affecting fifty thousand dollar sound system. But the other thing I think that we have to debate that, in the future, is that's something that's a problem, to go ahead and put the ottoman over.
Mm-hmm. That's, that's.
They, they have the panels, you can just drop them down, we can zip them up, it adds to the minutes here, if it's better for it, and you're gonna have that for all in the future.
Let me. I'll let you. Let me ask the city attorney, since he's talking about exception, cause I, I type of person believe in treating everybody the same, rather than picking and choosing certain organizations. So, uh, with that being said, what is the, uh, legal application if we go with the exception, rather than just changing the rule where everybody have that opportunity? I just.
I don't think it's a problem to have an exception, I mean, you're obviously not even required to have a policy, it's, it's just an option on the city's part to have a policy in the first place, so you can define the, the boundaries of it as you wish. I mean, I think, I could always find an example where it would be a problem, you know? You said we're only gonna let certain people do this, uh, you know, by class of people, but, but I don't think this is a problem, this kind of an exception is not a problem.
Mr. McKenney, I'd like to say one thing, uh, from today forward, we won't have any exceptions. No, we're just, we had one time in twelve years, we won't have anymore, if we have to take a driver out there, take care of them, get them in. But, that's not a problem or a battle I think we need to, to fight.
I remember, to your point, uh, Mr. Attorney, we, we used to have these kind of exceptions that folks would carve out, and waivers in the legislature, and there would be, you know, worded, something where it could only apply to one, such that like, anyone that's been operating for ten plus years, you know, uh, providing this service, you know, would be allowed to, but I don't know that we really need to get so specific as that, but providing a waiver for this Music on the Square, for the sound equipment, until such time as, you know, there's, uh, a covering number might be a way to go.
Could it be, whereas, if you're talking about a waiver, that just in case if somebody else can come up, uh, that they can get a waiver for, not just only this organization?
Somebody else can have an.
For other events, that they wanna come, you know, come and get a waiver, that's fine, but I, I think, I, me just, again, personally think that it should be not just on the one, not, not, get me wrong, but that's just the way I am, brother. Everybody should be treated the same, you know, and maybe we should do, if put in there, if they apply for a waiver to, to do that, then I probably, I think that probably set more better legally, I think, myself.
I'll just add that option if they wanna do. And, uh, it's not, the people that's using it now, I don't, they, I think they're the only one that has a standing thing, I don't see. When they come and get the, when they get this policy, we can, we'll address that once they, uh, get the insurance and all this stuff, if they're, and in the event that they need some type of exception or want one, they can just come and do what this group here is, you know? Uh, one thing, I, I, I know you guys said the ambulance can get there, I wanna also make sure that a chief and the fire trucks can make that.
We have got plenty of room.
And I, I, like I said, I think it is, uh, but, just have him come and look and see.
That'd be great.
Do, I guess we'll put this in a motion then.
Oh, you know, like, Mr. Griggs said, if, till we get a helmet, you know, something to come over the top, uh, like if you go on a stage, like you're gonna do something singing or whatever, you got your guitar, and you got your amp, and you can get out of that quick, but when you got our equipment they got, you gotta roll the bottom cord and stuff, that's a lot of money that we not gonna pay for when it get wet, you know? And so therefore, until we get a helmet there, we need to approve this for them helping our city, you know? With a good sound system.
I would second Ms. Ray's motion then to, you know, grant a waiver, uh, to Music on the Square, understanding that other people might come at some point requesting something somewhere.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Look at you, this thing.
Let me ask a question, I have to, I'm sure I imagine. Somebody would come for a waiver, that they would come perform the performance.
I would, that's what I would suggest to them, they would have to come, yeah.
Okay, okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Uh, motion carried, um, thank, thank you guys, I will work on that and get that to y'all before Friday.
Thank you very much, and we really appreciate you doing that for us.
Thank you so much, uh, let's, anybody else on the community to vote, uh, is that motion, will you? A second? All in favor, say aye.